Community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. Whereas Grand Forks, North Dakota acknowledges the mission of the extra mile, America, to create 500 extra mile cities and states in America and is proud to support extra mile day on November 1st, 2023. Now therefore I brand Mochensky Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota hereby proclaim November 1st, 2023 to be extra mile day and urge each individual in our community take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those around who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, family, community, country and world a better place. All right, with that we'll move on to regular business with public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1 is the public hearing on appeal certification of special assessments and approved findings on various projects as are listed on your agenda.
Thank you. Off the top, we'll open up the public hearing on item 3.1. Anyone wish to speak on item 3.1?
Would you like me to introduce? I can speak to it first if you, if you wish.
Why don't we open the public hearing then we can continue. Anyone here for item 3.1? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Please, Ms. Dorsted.
So just as a reveal, we come forward once a year to certify these special assessments. The staff report walks you through that and includes the projects that are included with this public hearing and certification of specials. This has come before, these projects have many touch points through city council through this, also went through the special assessment commission process where they assign benefits and costs that have been assessed don't exceed the benefits assigned. They've assigned benefits to those benefiting properties. They did hold their public hearing, the special assessment commission held that on September 28th, right here in city council chambers. Bonds either have been or soon to be issued for these projects and which are secured by these special assessments which you're certifying tonight. And then we will forward these to the county by November 1st.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Any comments on item 3.1 from council? All right.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigle and second for Ms. Osowski. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.2 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to mobile food licensure and adopt resolution establishing fees.
All right, same process. We'll open up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on item 3.2? Please come forward. Anybody speak on item 3.2? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any further comments on this item? I know we've seen it a few times now. Got a motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.3, public hearing and second reading of ordinance relating to fat soils increase control.
All right, again we'll open the public hearing on item 3.3. Anybody here to speak on item 3.3? Please step forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Open up the council for any further discussion.
Motion to approve.
Questions, you got a motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from Mr. Cavami. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 3.4 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend chapter 18 land development code sections as it relates to landscaping and buffer yard requirements.
All right, I know there was, this item was tabled by the planning and zoning commission. They were looking at another month, so I was gonna have Ryan Brooks come up if you want to add that, but first, Mr. Gosstead, I think we can do the public hearing still. This would fulfill that requirement if this does move forward in the future, or we need to have a second one?
No, I'd have the public hearing we'll be satisfied with tonight.
Okay, so I'm gonna, Mr. Brooks, I'm gonna just open the public hearing on the item first and then I'll let you clarify what the other planning and zoning was at, but it'd be nice to hear if anyone had comments on it. So we'll open the public hearing for item 3.4. Anybody here to speak on item 3.4? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Mr. Brooks, please give us an update on where that landed, the planning and zoning commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we asked for that to be tabled. We're, we're just going through, getting more public comments. We had a meeting today, we're gonna be tweaking, bring some changes back to planning and zoning in November, which would be November 1 is our next meeting. And so it'll be back before you, the 3rd Monday of November.
Okay, do you wanna, I guess are we looking for that to be postponed until that date? What is that date in November? I'm gonna put it in state certain.
November 6.
The 3rd week, did you say?
3rd Monday of November, we'll be back in front of city council.
Who's got there?
20th.
20th? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, do we have a motion from council to postpone until November 20th?
November 20th.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. We got a second for Ms. Osowski. I guess, is there any further comment? I don't know that I have a particular opinion on this. Anyone appear want to add anything until the commission can finish their work? Nope. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to item 4, citizen comments as they relate to action items. Any citizens and comments related to action items this evening, Ms. Lundmark?
I have three citizen comments, all for item 5.14, the billboard moratorium.
Okay, please.
First, Josh Gilliland.
All right, Mr. Gilliland, please step up.
Good evening, Mayor Bocinski and city council members. My name is Josh Gilliland, I'm with iDigital Outdoor, we're the sign company that's been recently putting up some billboards in Grand Forks here. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Just wanted to note a couple of things. Personally born and raised in Grand Forks, spent most of my life here, love this town, love UND, love the fighting sewer eagle, fighting hawks, sorry. It's hard to, hard to get used to the name change still all these years later, so. I own businesses here in town since 1996, so I'm very business friendly, business oriented. iDigital started in 2016. We've had a shop here in Grand Forks since 2018, but we haven't actually been able to do business here in Grand Forks because we don't have any signs. And so we're pretty excited to be able to come to Grand Forks. I think it's one of the, it is one of the only major markets in North Dakota that we are not in, and we've been very eager to come here for a lot of years. We cover about a four state area right now. And a little bit about iDigital, what we do in other markets, we do a ton of free PSA advertisements for the police, firefighters, or for the fire department, city, community, other public service announcements. We always love to do shop local ads, welcome to downtown ads, I think we've got one up on the board coming into downtown right now. We are doing a special local rate too, as far as the rates go for the local advertisers, and doing our best to try to be a good partner with Grand Forks. We want our signs to look good for everyone here. We're flexible, we're willing to work with everyone here. We, we're willing to make alterations to what we have. We want to be more of a partner than, than I think the, the way it feels now is maybe a little adversarial and we want to be a good partner and be able to provide good feedback, so. Real quick, just a couple of the issues that I wanted to cover that are beyond the moratorium, and I think it's related to the bigger picture of the moratorium in general. Like the way that the city sign code was changed and then maybe 20 plus years ago, was done in a way that created a moratorium for a 10-year period based off of the census. So once the census was published, there's a formula by the city sign code that says, all right, we're gonna issue this many permits. And so from a sign company's perspective, we come in and let's say, I'll just use a round number, let's say we get 10 permits, we've got one year to put those 10 permits into the ground, the way that the sign code reads, because the permit's only good for a year, and we know we will not get another sign for another 10 years. You know, so that's just the economic conditions from a sign company's perspective that's trying to come in. And we've got, you know, we'll have six signs in the ground, our, our other main competitor in the market has 99, so it's kind of a little bit of David and Goliath as it sits today. And we're trying to step into the market and alleviate some of the, I don't have a better word for it, but the anti-competitive environment that's been created, whether that's through economic conditions or sign code. And I think that if we alleviate some of those anti-competitive conditions, we can improve the look of the signs. Like if I have a sign across the street, my competitor has one, he's likely gonna be forced to paint it, make it look good, update it, those types of things. I think it's gonna give landowners more choices, so one of the other major issues I wanted to touch on was private property rights. With the non-conforming code in the, in the sign code, that if a board is non-conforming, meaning it's too close to another sign, it's, it's not zoned in the right zone, it might be too close to residential that was built years later after the sign was already there, that if that sign comes down, it cannot be replaced. And so I think one of the key pieces of information that was missing when the sign, or when the council members back then looked at the sign code and made the changes, was that the sign company nearly 100% of the time owns the structure, which means if the landowner goes with a different sign company, that structure's coming down and a new one would need to be put up in its place. With that mechanism happening, the sign code says that sign is done. So we had a couple of landowners that approached us, Paul Grand Gravlin and then Tommy Kensville. They wanted to do, they didn't want to work with the sign company they were with, we took a look at-
Mr. Gilliland, that's gonna be five minutes, I know you got someone with you, maybe you can wrap up for you, but-
Yep, I'll just, I'll just wrap up and say, I tried to get the, we tried to work with them, because of the non-conforming, they're basically stuck with their current sign company in perpetuity forever. They were kind of shocked by that, but I'll finish up on that. Sorry, I didn't see the timer.
No, no problem. Yeah, they're up there on the sides, but it's-
Oh, okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Paul Hilt? If I said that wrong, apologies.
Hi, my name is Paul Hilt, I'm one of the partners with iDigital Outdoor. Good afternoon, Mayor Bocinski and council members. I guess at the end of the day, our, our goal was to come to Grand Forks, and we've been trying to come here for years, is to be a good partner with the city and the community, join the chamber, give back, and now try to find a solution to the sign code. If it's creating a subcommittee or committee or whatever that might be, to look at how the overall structure of the sign code is, what makes a change to possibly clean up the city or beautify the city. We are 100% in line in wanting to become a part of that and a solution to that. I guess, again, we came here hoping to do business with the community. We are vested in the entire state outside of this market space for the most part, and so putting this together was very important to us. And so we'd like to continue to see it happen. With that being said, I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Jim England?
Mr. England, please.
Hi, I'm Jim England, the mayor, members of-
Hi, I'm Jim England, the mayor, and members of the council. I represent Newman Outdoor Advertising. Just, just wanna say, we've been doing business in Grand Forks for, I would say, nearly 50 years. I know there's a lot of new billboards that have gone up. Newman Signs put in their first digital billboard in 2008. We now have currently six billboard sites, eight billboard faces, over 15 years. We kind of, we kind of grow as the advertisers dictate, we service our customers. When they ask for something, we work within the code and try to do it fairly and within the rules. And I noticed in the, in the information regarding the proposed moratorium that you'd like to look at the sign code, come up with something new, have a moratorium. Also says something about consultants, I'd certainly like a representative from our company to be a consultant, if that could be. And just kinda have a, kind of a question, like how long the moratorium would look, look to be in effect, you know, is it years, months, that kinda thing? And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, that's it for item 4. Item 5, action items. We did just have our insurance and pension committee meeting, so I know we've gotta talk about item 5.1 and 5.2 as new, and then obviously 5.14 on the billboards. Is there any other items that council members would like to pull this evening?
Can city staff pull?
Oh, Al, did you want, was there one that you'd like to talk further on, Mr. Grasser, too?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, you have 5.8 and 5.9, just some brief updates.
Okay, didn't see you back there, thank you. All right, well then we'd be looking for approval on items 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, 5.13, and 5.15. Got a motion to approve from Mr. Veen, and a second from Mr. Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So Ms. Thorsted, we've got 5.1, 5.2, 5.8, 5.9, and 5.14.
Got it. And, okay, we'll start with 5.1, employee health insurance benefit RFP results.
Good evening, Mayor Bocinski, Council President Sandy, and members of the city council. Before you is a request to approve renewal of the Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Dakota Health Insurance Carrier for the city for 2024, with a rate increase of 16.8%. The Pension and Insurance Committee met just prior to this meeting, and unanimously approved moving forward with the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal for 2024, along with a request to Blue Cross Blue Shield for a second-year rate cap of 12% option. The committee also expressed the intention to move to a self-funded plan, or option, with multiple plan designs when the timing is right. Katie Videl from Brown &amp; Brown, our employee benefits consulting firm, is present and available for questions if the council has any. Otherwise, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the renewal for Blue Cross Blue Shield as the city health insurance carrier for 2024, with a request to Blue Cross Blue Shield for a 12% rate cap option for year two.
I'll make that motion. Got a motion from Mr. Weber, do we have a second? Got a second from Ms. Lunskey, and then I'll open up for comments. President Sandy, please.
Ms. Thorsted, what did we put in the budget?
We have 15% covered in the budget for 2024, yes.
15% for the city, for the city's portion?
Yes.
Because under 16.8, we'd be covering 12.6, and the employees would be covering 4.2, at 75.25, wouldn't we?
So the premium is shared 75.25, employee, employee placement, but of that, we each take an increase of 16% increase on, for our share.
Sure. So, so we're essentially covered.
Yeah, give or take, I believe there's probably a little slippage in there, I think
our budget will be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I know Mr. Weigle and Mr. Weber also serve in that committee with, with me, would you guys, any comments you guys wanted to make regarding the result?
No.
No. I think it's, you know, I think we're seeing this all across the country, it's never great when you have these large increases, we are able to keep Blue Cross Blue Shield, which has been a popular program. I think what it comes down to is we look to try to be self-funded, then the risk is on you, so we would, it would not have worked this year, because quite frankly, we spent more, so we were covered by other healthcare, other plans for other health carriers, other municipalities actually subsidized us this year. In the future, if we go to a self-funded plan, we have the opportunity of taking that risk on ourselves, but certainly needs to be the right time where it makes financial sense, and it really wasn't this year, and it probably won't be next year, depending upon how our, our outcomes are with the usage of the plan. But I think, long-term, we would like to see multiple options, so that there's at least two options, of maybe a higher deductible one and a lower deductible one, so that our employees can, can choose between the two and have that option. That's been talked about quite a while, but that was, you know, really the discussion that we had. I think trying to get this committee done a little bit sooner would be great, and we would appreciate best and final offers from our, the parties involved from the start, rather than waiting for them to dust, sharpen their pencil the second round. Outside of that, I think that encapsulates our conversations. All right. We got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.2, appoint canvassing board and set meeting date and time relating to the November 14th, special election.
Mayor Bocinski, members of city council, as we've called for a special election, we will have to canvass our ballots at the end. The canvassing board membership is set in North Dakota Sentry Code, as the mayor, two members of city council, the city auditor, and the city attorney. So tonight, we're looking for you to appoint two of your members to serve on that board, and then we also need to discuss the, the time and place for the meeting. State Sentry Code does require that it be 13 days following the date of the election, which stipulates then November 27th. We were looking at 4:30 that day in the second floor conference room. Up to the wishes of council.
Ms. Luntmark, why don't you just explain exactly what, what you'll be doing when you're canvassing?
Sure, so any ballots that come in prior or after, that are postmarked on or before Election Day but don't arrive by Election Day, the canvassing board will review those ballots and determine whether or not they're appropriately voted and should be added to the vote count. And then also, any people who vote on Election Day, or previous to Election Day by absentee, and have, don't have proper identification, they will be given, they'll be called a set-aside ballot, and those ballots will come back to the canvassing board to review the documentation that was provided later, to determine whether it's sufficient and that ballot should be allowed.
Perfect, well, I suppose just asking for someone to raise their hand, I'm gonna defer to President Sandy how you wanna handle.
Ms. Luntmark, at the last sales tax vote, do you recall how many ballots there were? A dozen, maybe?
Yeah.
It might even have been less than that, just a handful, so it's a really exciting committee to be on. If I recall correctly, Mr. Weber and I did the last one, I'm sure we would do it again, unless somebody's itching to be on that committee.
I'd make that move.
I would like to be on it.
I'd like to be on it.
Well, great, I'll make the motion that Ms. Lunskey and Ms. Osowski are on the canvassing board.
All right, so we're gonna have Bochensky, Osowski, and Lunskey. We've been waiting for all the Polish wrestlers, I'll take that.
What could go wrong?
And then also, so if council's in agreement with 4:30 PM and second floor conference room, we have in the past, sometimes we only get a handful of ballots, but I always hesitate to do 5 o'clock, just in the event that we get bad weather or something, and we do have a fair amount that come late, so.
Include that in your motion.
Yeah, certainly, 4:30 that day.
That day.
27th.
Who was the, who had seconded that, I missed that.
Osowski.
Ms. Osowski seconded that. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion carries unanimously.
All right, 5.8, bid award for Project 7978, reconstruct Washington Street from Fifth Avenue South to First Avenue.
Mr. Grasser.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. On 5.8, that was supposed to be the bid award for a bid opening on, on the Washington Underpass. The DOT delayed that bid opening, they didn't have all the, all the easements and things they needed from VNSF. So we would, they're gonna rebid it, we're gonna recommend, we table that to November 20th.
We postpone to November 20th.
I second.
Got a motion from President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Any further comments? Thank you, Mr. Grasser, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.9, bid award for Project 8718, 32nd Avenue South, I-29 to South Washington, CPR and chip seal.
Mr. Grasser, please.
Thank you. This bid opening did occur on, on October 13th. Remember, this is 32nd Avenue South, this is the concrete portion, essentially, the asphalt components got, got bid this summer, so. The bids were open on the 13th. The low bidder was Tizak, in, in the amount of $1,595,425.61. The bid was about 23% over the engineer's estimate, but we have had these DOT bids fairly consistently come in a little high. This is less over the engineer's estimate than some of the other bids we, we have seen, so reminder, the city's share of this is 10%, and we're recommending award, or we're recommending to concur in the award when the DOT awards it.
Okay. Mr. Grasser, when it's a local project, and we get an engineer's estimate, that's coming from your team, on this project, who is the engineer that's making the estimate?
It comes through the DOT offices. I'm not sure which one, but, but-
But that would, but I, I guess my point is, we've had very good engineer estimates on local projects that have either come in almost identical or slightly below, but they don't seem to be the case, at least from the near, near past on these.
I'm speculating a bit, they have a large, a state database, which I think they sometimes have a little bit of trouble manipulating to, to the local levels, so giving them a little bit of cover, they, you know, I think they've got some constraints they have to work under also, that we can fully accommodate our local perspective.
All right. Mr. Feeler, do you have something?
I didn't ask what, Al, how much did we save by rebidding this and separating it from the original bid, if we had just done it all at once?
I think the, the, I don't have it by phases, but the, the original, the total first phase was about 64% over the engineer's estimate, so we've greatly narrowed that gap from what it otherwise would have been.
All right, thank you. The council, we got approval from Mr. Veen, and we got a motion to approve from Mr. Veen, a second from Mr. Cavami. Any further discussion? I know a lot of people are looking forward to this project getting done. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
5.14, billboards.
All right, do we have any staff that wanted, any update on that, or go away to council? I don't know, why don't you just give us a, kind of a lay of the land, where it's at, Mr. Brooks?
The ordinance says, as drafted, and Dan's here as well, probably can include any other comments, but is just setting up to do a moratorium, and in the meantime, we, while that's in place, we'll assemble a potentially hiring consultant to look at those aspects, safety and aesthetics.
All right, Mr. Grasser, I guess give us a timeline to complete your work. I think the question had been, you know, levied at least once, on what, what type of timeframe you'd be expected, and what, I guess it's up to council, what the, you know, if they wanna have a sign committee, what the makeup of that's gonna be, but where are you at?
Yeah, and, and I hadn't, I know the comment during public comments tonight was years out, I'm not expecting years out, but the, the provision about the consultants was at my instigation, because I thought it would be important to have somebody that has some expertise in, in some of the safety and the aesthetic issues that, that these billboards have across the country, and, and look at them from a location standpoint. I think the comment was, you know, the, the number of these signs that are put up, is it should be based on population, should it be based on other criteria? You know, and other health and welfare type of issues, and other governmental issues, interests that the, that the city should be looking at with respect to the sign code. I was encouraged by some of the comments tonight about addressing the non-conforming issues, things like that. Encouraged by those that, that made the public comment about participating and wanting to participate, and, and things like that, to try to make the sign code better, not necessarily directed by, by the industry, but at least getting industry input, along with the experts. So, the long or the short of it, I don't have necessarily a timeframe to work as diligently as possible, but I, I think the first step would be to seek out and see if there's these type of experts that, that could assist in this effort. Looking at the sign code, it's very small print, very long. It's like 18 pages long, and, and to go through a comprehensive review will take a little bit of time. I don't wanna necessarily say it's a 60-day, or 90-day, or 120-day time period, but what I would do is, is come back and provide updates periodically, you know, every council meeting or Cal meeting to, to advise us to where things are at and where things are set at the, at the moment. Because if we do hire a consultant, that would be brought to your attention and get your approval beforehand, so. The short of the answer is, I don't have a, a date certain, but I don't expect it to be a year or years to get this done. And, and if we're not moving fast enough, I'm, I'm confident the city council will give us direction to get moving a little faster.
Sounds good. I do think you had mentioned the 10-year more, it was a, more of a metaphor for the fact that your, your signs are, you know, you're only increasing the numbers once every 10 years at a census, but outside of that, I guess, we'll open it up to council for their thoughts, Ms. Osowski, please.
So first of all, I don't like the monopoly that Newman has in our town. I, I don't know if you can, if we could adjust the sign code to make it safe, like maybe only one company can have, you know, maybe 75% of the permits, I don't really know, but it, I think that if we, I'm, I don't want more billboards, I just wanna make that clear. But I think that with the ones and the places that we have, I, I think it would be nice to have a little bit more competition for our citizens and for our landowners, you know, the people who advertise, just, you know, some friendly competition isn't gonna hurt anybody. I, I also don't like about our current code, I don't like how the company, you know, we only add in more billboards, or we only adjust the number of billboards every 10 years, and the company only has one year then to put up all the billboards, so sometimes it's a little bit shocking for a community to all, all of a sudden see like 10 brand-new billboards go up, when really, this is gonna be it for 10 years, and, and sometimes that's just a little bit shocking. So maybe if we are going to adjust the number of billboards that our community has only every 10 years, I think that we should allow that company, you know, maybe like five years to get their signs up, instead of just having it all dumped on at once, and kind of causing a shock, which it has caused. I am against a consultant, I guess. I think this is something that we should be able to figure out on our own, and I don't think we need to pay someone $100,000 to tell us how, you know, we feel about billboards. I was very taken back that, I guess the example that someone gave me was the, kind of the crappy sign that is over by Cass Clay on Gateway and on Washington, and, you know, it's never gonna be redone, it's never gonna be updated, because it's currently non-conforming. And so now we're kind of just stuck looking at this crappy billboard, because Newman doesn't wanna take it down, because they'll just lose a billboard, and then no one else can put up a new billboard, like a nicer, prettier one, because it's just not, it's non-conforming. And so I, I think that we should, maybe all non-conforming signs need to come down after five years of us changing the code, maybe, or maybe we can allow the company that has that billboard sign to at least make it look nice, you know, because now we're just stuck with some ghetto billboards around our town. I guess those are- I guess those are all the comments that I really had on the billboards.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Anybody else? Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle.
Right after.
Actually, I believe that this is a fairly specialized technical area of the law, that only a handful of people who specialize in this would normally engage in. Has your law firm ever dealt with sign law in the past?
We have not. And I was looking at it more from the standpoint of, more the pragmatic issues, like distraction, what they should be looking at from a more practical standpoint, not necessarily going through, and it wouldn't mean that the consultant wouldn't also provide some of that legal background as well. But I was looking at it, again, from the standpoint of, what things should the city be considering from a safety and aesthetic standpoint, from what the sign should look like, where they should be located, things like that, that we can draw from an expert's standpoint, and draw on their knowledge and expertise across the country.
I have heard from individuals and organizations in the community that I have a great deal of respect for, who are concerned about the moratorium. But I also have to say that I've had many, many more concerns, citizens, bringing this issue forward. My motion last week in considering a moratorium, it was, it was not my intent, there's always unintended consequences. So I did not intend for us to be protecting poor-quality signs, grandfathering those in. So, you're giving us some reassurance that this is something that will move forward. And I don't think that the city is going to be stuck for the next year, or five years, or anything with bad signs. So, a process for consulting people with expertise, as you said, we don't want industry driving this policy, but we do want to consider their input. So, that's my comment. Thanks.
Mr. Weigle.
I think the one thing that I would look at is, I think President Sandy let the genie out of the bottle a couple of weeks back, when we talked about signs in general. And I think we can look at billboards, but I think, as a bigger picture, we have to look at all signs, and not just the billboards. I think, while this is a billboard moratorium, I think if we dive farther into this and look at signs as a whole, I think we're going to be much happier with our product. And, you know, I think we have the ability to limit how many signs one company can have, because if you look at gaming, we limit how many gaming sites that one nonprofit can have in the city of Ground Forks. So, I'm guessing we could probably do the same with billboards at some point. I don't know if I support that either way, but it is an option, but I really think we should look at all of our signing ordinance as a whole, and come up with something better.
Mr. Kavami, and then we'll go to Ms. Osowski.
Just another piece to add, you know, the process for which we approve signs is one that I'm focused on, I guess, because if you look at the sign on the bridge, I mean, that followed all the rules, but there, I think maybe that we're missing a step in that, and that's where I think an overall sign committee or sign policy, you know, I think that when you look at that sign, you know, I was informed today, it's smaller than the one that was there before, which is true, but it also appears like it's significantly closer to the highway, or to the driveway. I think, you know, if, can we, can we look at how we approve things, so it can meet all the possible requirements? And I'm not saying we want to micromanage, but there probably needs to be some sort of approval process. And then the other piece too, is that, you know, personally with DOT, there's lots of requirements, on signage, on how bright they can be, how quickly the image can change, there's lots and lots of things. So, if we're trying to start somewhere, you know, maybe the DOT can say, this is what we've done, and we talked to XYZ consultant, or hey, we have this guy that can help you, or gal. I would just think that the DOT has probably figured this out already, and can we just leverage that?
Ms. Osowski, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Vean.
I was, I know you're going to hate me for asking, but are we going to talk about location? Is Columbia ever going to be up for digital billboards?
It is today.
It is?
Yes.
I thought we couldn't put them on Columbia.
Yeah, actually, the code does limit Columbia Road and 32nd as well.
From where to where?
Columbia from...
I'm sorry, from where to where?
Apologize. Councilman Sandy, I believe it's from, off the look, but I believe it's Gateway to the north. I'll see if it can go north of Gateway, but I know it is specifically written in code, and then it talks about a quarter-mile distance in each direction.
What justifies, I guess, what makes it a digital billboard? Like certainly Buffalo Wild Wings has digital, you know, advertisement there, but that's not considered a digital?
That's not a billboard. So, billboards are off-premise.
It's still a digital sign.
Yeah. So, digital on-premise signs are different. So, I'm talking just billboards, which are off-premise. On-premise, certainly, the Buffalo Wild Wings and Applebee's, on-premise signs can be on Columbia Road.
Can be digital.
Yes.
Or, I think you could say off-premise also advertises other things, a little easier. I think we need to be careful about if we only give a certain company 75%, because then that would mean like, okay, iDigital only does digital signs, we would have 25 digital billboards. And I know the appetite for digital billboards isn't really high right now. So I just think we need to be careful with that one. I don't think there's another company in Ground Forks that does billboards. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Vean.
Mr. Brooks, in the code, the city code, especially the sign code, if I remember right, the sign code is one of the longest codes?
Oh, I would agree with that, as part of our land development code.
As part of the land development, I think the sign code, if I remember right, it seems like there's always adjustments being made with the sign code.
Yes, there's been quite a few even in the last couple of years, correct?
There's been subcommittees of P&amp;Z, everybody that are looking at signs. So all I'm saying is, this is a really complex issue, as much as we think it's quite simple, and it impacts people in a lot of different ways. And I don't think it's going to be easily done, but I do agree that we need to do something here. So, just manage people's expectations.
President Sandy.
Yeah, Mr. Gangler and I, and several people were on Sign, P&amp;Z Sign Committee, 2006, '07, '08. We spent hours and hours and hours tweaking the code over and over again, round and round and round. And talk about unintended consequences, every time we went one way, somebody would side-swipe and say, well, what about this, and what about that? So, Mr. Vean is 100% correct. It is incredibly complicated. I think, I'm going to move approval on the moratorium, but I would say, if we are going to move forward at some point and allow billboards, digital or not, I think we should dictate where they can go. I think we should look at our city and decide where a billboard might be relevant, and then offer them up for people to pay for those permits. And if nobody likes the location, that's not our fault. Thank you, Mayor.
I second Dana.
All right. Thank you. We got a motion, a second. I think I just want to make a couple of comments, and if anyone else has anything. I think there's two real concerns. I think the non-conforming is a concern. Like, I'm a huge fan of private property rights, but, you know, generally when you're grandfathering something, and it's, you know, somebody's house, or something that they, you know, a domicile, it's not a sign. I think we've set new rules, this is not acceptable, and all that's left is non-conforming signs that aren't going to get maintained. I think that's a problem that needs to be addressed. And secondly, on-premise signs, I think we've, you know, we have an inspections department that's overloaded with inspecting buildings all the time, for their quality, and making sure they're up to a certain standard. Why that doesn't exist to a level that's enforceable on on-premise signs, is causing some of the issues that we're dealing with today. I was going to mention that maybe this committee should be an offshoot of planning and zoning, but now hearing President Sandy talk about the committee year after year after year, I wouldn't want to maybe send it back to them. I think they'd definitely be involved, and have input, and have members from both this board and that committee. But I think that work needs to just take the sign code as it is, and start fresh. I think we've tried to massage this many, many times, and now it's probably start with a blank sheet of paper, and go from there. So I guess that would be my thoughts to you, Mr. Goss, as you start to write this, which is going to be a challenge. And if there's anybody out there, anybody watching that is aware of another city that has a perfect sign code, if you could please email us or give us a phone call, that would save significant time. But, that's my thought, Mr. Goss. You turned your mic on, so you, you good with that?
I, I'm, that was kind of the thought process I was having too, is when I mentioned that there was an 18-page, very small print, very long ordinance, it seemed logical that it might be time to relocate it and do a clean slate. And I wrote down a number of comments tonight from council members, like the number of signs, and getting an understanding is, are there other communities that are doing the same thing, and what are the repercussions, what are the unintended consequences of doing that? And how do they address those type of issues, so that you can make an educated decision when it's presented to you?
Yeah, and again, I guess the last thing, I would just stress that we do this in a timely manner. There's people that are here tonight, they're running a business, and they need to know what the rules are, that they got to play by, so, and they need to know that sooner or later.
Can I ask a question? So, since we have, we're putting a hold on this, and obviously iDigital's licenses are only good for a year, correct? Can we, like, give them?
Please.
Okay, okay, so they might have more than a year. Thank you.
And I believe that, is that 12 months, once the permit's issued? Is that kind of where that, or once you've got those rights? I guess, give some color on that.
We've got two pending, and I think I mentioned that last time. So, there's two pending, there's the one Denny's on South Washington that has been tabled here, and then the second one was on Gateway Drive. We're still working, that one's within 500 feet of another billboard. So, I think they were looking at potentially moving another billboard to fit. So right now, those are the two pendings that they actually have submitted the applications on, so.
Okay.
Mr. Basfle.
Mayor Bocinski, members of the council, that one year, we can always extend that. We do with buildings, we have a hospital that's been building for the last two and a half years, so that just has to come across my desk and get approval. So that's not a problem whatsoever.
Where's that hospital at?
Well, it's a couple more, they got a couple more months left.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not a problem if they can't get something done within a year, it's just a simple conversation, we extend it.
So if you can do it on a $500 million bill, then you can probably do it on a sign?
Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Weigle.
Maybe this is for Mr. Phelan, or Mr. Sandy, or whoever, but why do we have a downtown sign review board, and not a midtown sign review board, or a south end? Why do we treat downtown differently than we do the rest of the city?
I think, I'll give mine, and I think, especially after the flood of '97, there was a thought of creating a distinctive downtown, and ensuring that when it got redeveloped, as we see today, that it conformed in a certain way and fashion. So, I think there was a lot of focus on the downtown rebuilding and preserving, and I think that's been successful. However, you know, that did lead to further conversations about midtown discussions and other ways, is that we're an entire community, and shouldn't be just for the downtowns, which I think highlights the fact of, if it's really great for your downtown, maybe it's great for other areas of the community too, that could benefit by it too, and we shouldn't forsake other areas. But that was the initiation of, as I recall, working in flood recovery response.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Todd really hit on that, and we're not that uncommon in that we have those higher standards in the downtown. And we are starting to spread that out, I want to say about 15 years ago, we have something called Quarter Overlay District, where we actually have some design guidelines for outside the downtown. They aren't sign-specific, but they, there are some other standards that we've started to spread to other parts of the community as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Osowski, please.
Are there rules on like, what can be on these billboards, or not? Because there's one billboard that is borderline, I think, offensive, and it's that Bloom one, and I think it's right over here on DeMers, there's a picture of a half-naked lady. I have a feeling that the procedure that the company is trying to push is something for women.
Yeah, once you start dealing with content, it becomes a, it's a different animal when you start dictating content. We cannot, I would not recommend having any rules dictating what the content would be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we got a motion and a second, and then I guess my last thing, Mr. Phelan, administratively, you can keep people posted as far as the other businesses that are operating billboards in town, as far as how the process is going, and how they can engage.
I'm just thinking, Mayor Bocinski and members of the city council, you're going to put in place a moratorium conceivably, and then is it your will? Then the administration will come back with kind of the working group on this matter then, and bring that back. And what I've heard tonight, you want city council representatives, planning and zoning to be engaged, and obviously the private sector, and a consultant, that's what I hear. But my thought is, we bring back, at least to a community whole, just to inform you how we're moving forward.
Does that work? All right. Got a motion and seconds, seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That's it for action items, we want item six, information items.
6.1, Investment Portfolio Summary as of September 30th.
Thank you, received.
And 6.2, Statement of Changes in Cash Balances as of August 31st.
Thank you.
And 6.3, Human Resources Third Quarter Report.
Thank you. Move on to item seven, Approval of Minutes and Bills.
And 7.1 is the vendor list, and it's attached.
Got a motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Mr. Kavami. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2, Minutes from May 1st and May 15th.
Ooh, I see we got a new, we got a new code on the dating there. I've seen it's very numerical now, so, but nice to see you, we got a couple of weeks. Appreciate the work that your team's doing, and Sheri, great job getting us caught up. We got a motion from Vice President Weber, and a second from President Sandy. As is, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, citizen comments now, in the general, of general nature, do we have any citizen comments?
Yes, I have one individual who would like to speak. They listed on their form that they have two topics, and they are requesting five minutes for each. So, Dennis Denault.
Oh, Mr. Denault, we can only give you five. It's five minutes, you have to speak two and a half on each, or four on one and one on the other. That's the best we can do for you.
I'll be back in two weeks. Thank you, folks.
Okay, I'll start your clock. No, thanks.
Well, there's two important issues here, but I will not stop on this three-strike issue that's going on a year and a half now, and I still haven't got any answers. This one morning last year, you would not believe all the illegal activities next door. This is pushing 10 o'clock in the morning, and this goes on from morning till night. And this young beautiful lady in her late twenties, early thirties, when I was in the backyard, I could, you know, 50, 75 feet away, and they were getting into a domestic argument. And it was going on for quite some time, and then finally, the tenant in the south apartment next door to me, he finally got her kicked out, threw her ass out on the patio, and she was out, she was outside there trying to kick down the door, these were her exact words. "You took my money, you raped me." And, but I did not see the landlord in that two-story mouse cage come out and help this young lady. And I said, "Go into the office and call the cops." And of course, she's already all drugged up. And this has been going on for years. I mean, this is, it's just frustrating what he gets away with. And unfortunately, I had to call the PD, because this kept going on and on and on. These people are so drugged up, they can't even back up straight for 10, 15 feet. And unfortunately, I'm sure she got pulled over. And the tenant up there in the south apartment, he's sitting up there hiding, and there's nothing the PD could do about this. But because she was driving, I'm sure she got pulled over, locked up, DUI, whatever. And this has been going on for years, the last 18 years, in fact, even longer, like I said before, ever since Sheriff Hill was alive and was our sheriff. And I am just so... And I am just so sick of everything that he gets away with next door, and I'll kind of leave it like that because I'm going to, I've got some other issues to bring up, but one major one is that he's beat the hell out of my property with a snow blower, he's buried my gas meter all the time, he beat up my cars, throw snow up against my house, my garage. He took his bobcat last year, last winter, and he rammed, that's four tons of steel, he rammed the dog crap out of my garage. You can still see all the red marks from the corner weight, and yet, nothing was ever done either about this. But, two weeks ago, I walked around the corner to look at my garage, and I got locked up, so I got a free bowl of Rice Krispies the next morning, and I just walked around to look at my garage because I'm trying to figure out how to straighten it out. It's leaning over a half inch in the back and about an inch and a half in the front. It's a 1936 garage, but the house is solid, and it well gets straightened out, and anyway, he better hope that nobody backs into his two-story mouse cage with a payloader, because you can see all the structure cracks. That building's got at least 10 cracks, structure cracks, motor cracks on the south side, and that's not even counting the east side. The west side's pretty good, so I don't know how he can get away with all this. And after the fire, after the fire approximately eight years ago, this should have been updated for ADA, I don't know how he can get grandfathered in after a fire, but that place should have been updated for all the vendors upstairs, including a second fire escape backup instead of one set of old stairs. So, I'm just, it's, everybody, everybody that hears this, they cannot figure out how he gets away with this. So, I'll leave it like that, and I'll be back in two weeks because I got a lot to talk about for the last 18 years with all the illegal activities next door. So, this has got to be looked into and taken care of, if not, if you folks don't want to do it, we got to get the feds involved. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan.
I'd just like to say a few words about Dale Bergam, and Dale Bergam passed away this past week, his funeral was today, and Dale presented in front of the city council many of a time over the last few decades, and you'll know Dale Bergam as Webster Foster Westner, or as we refer to him as WFW. And Dale worked a lot on our wastewater collection system, which, you know, our pump stations and forest mains, and also worked quite a bit in our, at our MSW landfill, our solid waste landfill, because that has a wastewater collection system. So, I just want a huge shout out to Dale Bergam and his family and all the really great work that he did, and at his funeral, there was lots of discussion about him wanting to follow through on a plan and being detailed orientated, and, but on the people's side, just building people up, and there were lots of love from his family and all that he did for them, so it was quite heartwarming. The other thing Dale did is, we now see the Veterans Memorial Park and all that it is today, and to be frank, back in the day, the committee was kind of muddling through a little bit, and the city stepped in back in the day to try to create some path forward for them, and so we assigned Mark Walker to helping them out, and also teamed them up with Dale Bergam. And Dale gave a lot of time and his talent and his effort to that particular project. And so, when you see the Veterans Memorial Park, that has a lot of the fingerprints of Dale Bergam on it, and a lot of his own time that he stuck into it, and he made the committee, got him on a straight path and got him moving forward, and even today, at the funeral, the Veterans Memorial Committee had a, were the honorary pallbearers there as kind of out of respect of what all Dale had done to them and led them through to victory as part of that. In my career with Dale, I just want to, number one, he was an engineer, but he was a doer, and if there's one thing about wastewater collection systems, there's not a whole lot of glory, and there's not a lot of romanticism in those systems. Dale was a kind of engineer that got involved with the operations, and when he designed and helped us build things, it was designed with the operator in mind, and he knew that those men and women are the ones that have to be out there at midnight and working in those systems. So, he really did make sure that those systems were designed for operators, and so there's lots of love for our operators, for Dale and all that he did, because he thought of them first. And in a lot of times with engineers, they don't have a lot of firsthand experience in working in the systems themselves, but Dale was the kind of guy that understood those systems, was out in the field, and if there ever was a bad time in our wastewater collection system, sanitary sewer overflow, or things that go wrong at bad times of the day, you would see our crew out there with our supervisors, but you'd also see another guy out there, and that's Dale Bergam, helping our crews and getting his hands dirty and doing things. So, tonight is an ode to Dale Bergam and all that he gave the City of Grand Forks, and he was a special guy who did a lot of special work throughout the City of Grand Forks, so thanks to Dale and his family.
Thank you for that, Mr. Phelan, very kind. Ten, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Oselsky, any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Lonsky.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavami?
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I would like to maybe make a few comments on the ribbon cutting ceremony at water treatment plant. Mayor and Todd, you guys and this whole city did an amazing job, I think, of putting that whole ceremony and everything together. I think I talked to a number of the dignitaries who came away, and they acknowledged the wisdom that Grand Forks had in utilizing state funds for that project, and the success and some of the challenges that took place to get that done. I think Tammy Miller, the Lieutenant Governor, acknowledged that the plant is designed for the future of North Dakota, and I think it was a prime example of what other communities could do, and they need to complete the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And really, the last comment I wanted to acknowledge was that most of this, if not all of it, was done primarily through Grand Forks-based leadership. A2S been working on it since the mid-'90s. Wayne Grzeszewski was the design engineer that worked on that and worked on the raw water intake. He's been an amazing asset for the city. Construction engineers, we've acknowledged, like Scott Krinkstead, again, was there with the construction side, and then the city had just so many people involved over the years, but at least in the design, Freddie Getz, who was an operator who had worked on the project, and then just wanted to acknowledge Todd, who has worked over 20 years to bring that project through fruition. So, I think it was a great project, it's successful. I think, Todd, you acknowledged that this is a quality of life project for the whole community to have that done, so just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. I think we're all grateful that we don't have to worry about water treatment because it's handled now. That's good. Mr. Weber?
No, thank you, Mr. Weber.
President Sandy?
Thank you. The, I certainly want to wish good luck and welcome to Grand Forks, to the new Salvation Army captains. It's great that they would join us in our community. The looping technology in here really is awesome, so for anyone that has hearing aids, I can hear everything everyone's saying. It's really great. Lastly, regarding Dale Bergam, I didn't really work with him, but he was at lots of meetings that we were at, and the one thing that always struck me about him is he was always smiling, and he always had something nice to say. I should take a lesson from him, because he was such a nice, just a really nice, nice person, and my sincere condolences to his family, he was certainly one of the good ones.
All right, I'll end on a positive. Obviously, we got some great weather out there, and for anybody that was around at all or read the newspaper at all, I want to congratulate the UND football team for their big victory over NDSU. I was a junior in college last time that happened, 20 years ago, and remember that day fondly, so I'm glad two decades later, I was able to sit there with my boys and cheer them on to assure victory. So, congratulations to them and to the UND hockey team too, it was quite a winning weekend, very positive for the community. So, I will leave it on that. We got a little bit of daylight left, so we got a motion to adjourn from Ms. Oselsky and a second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.